To order, thank you for being with us tonight. I'd like to open it up with a starting prayer, so Mr. Hastings, will you please?
Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings that you've given us for health, strength, peace, and a country of opportunities that we live in and a great community that we have the opportunity to serve. We pray that you will be with us tonight during our deliberations that we will do what's right in thy sight. We pray that a special blessing on all the people that have suffered as a result of the recent hurricane that hit our country. Be with us in all that we do, these things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen. All right, Lauren, will you call the roll?
Altizer.
Here.
Coker. Evans. Hardwick.
Here.
Hasty.
Here.
Longmire.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Silkwood. And Slattery.
Here.
All right, Coker is the only absentee.
All right, any questions about tonight's agenda? Is everybody prepared to accept it as it is? Anyone want to move it, change anything? All right, I'll take that as it's okay. All right, first thing, we have tonight's public hearings, and we got first one is a request by Volunteer State Bank to rezone 2.85 acres from office and suburban residential low-density SR1 to office plan development, OPD, and suburban residential low-density plan development, SR1PD, and to approve a comprehensive development plan for the property. Cogball State Bank property is located at 530 through 532 New Shackle Island Road and 101 Creekwood Lane on the east side of New Shackle Island Road and on the north side of Creekwood Lane as identified on Sumner County tax map, 145 parcels, 001.00, 060.00, and 060.01. So, do we have anybody from the audience that is wanting to speak? And I have a list here, I'll call them in order if y'all are prepared, if you will. Okay, first, we have two that were on the other public hearing. Charles Neglia.
Yes.
Are you wanting to speak for? For which one? For Lakes of Savannah?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's not a Lakes of Savannah. That was withdrawn, yeah, that was for Belford, Belsford. That was withdrawn shortly after it was, after submitted, so that actually isn't on the agenda tonight, and the developer withdrew that, withdrew that request to amend the development plan. Okay? Yeah, is that from the developer? Yeah, there's nothing on the agenda for that, we're not aware of that particular plan. Yeah, well, thank you for coming. I apologize that you came, but if you'd like to stick around, we'd love to have you. Okay, thank you, sir.
Someone else named Metrol Smith signed up for the same one? Were you planning to speak to that same? Which one were you wanting to speak with? Okay, so we'll move you over to the other one, okay? All right, thank you. All right, now we're going back to the Volunteer State Bank conversation, okay? So, Robert Little, you're first on the list. Can you give your name, your address, and stand up and speak if you'd like?
I'm Robert Little, 314 Raindrop Lane. Many years ago, Glenbrook North received a flood exemption creating extra traffic to that corner at Glenbrook and Creekwood. The bank should have stopped this construction, but they did not, so brothers struck the city, they decided to come through our neighborhood. Here's everything changed for. That's three more traffic for our subdivision. Also, in Creekwood, at the stoplight going into New Shackle, only three cars can be in line at the driveway that they want to do. So where are we supposed to park when we go out? There's no turn lane, it's only a one-lane road. Also, Stop 30 stoplight is within the city district, but the problem with it is that it's not being approved with the new stop sign revision plan. That could create a whole lot of problem solving if they just include it. So, the bank hasn't looked at that either. The problem also is, the bank is asking for a one-story building, but if they ever want to do a variance, we'll never see that sign because it'll be on New Shackle instead of Creekwood saying they want to raise the building to multi-story. Let's see. Also, if this zoning gets changed, what will stop the board from changing over to 102 and 104 Creekwood with the church right there? That's a prime location to go office, so where is that traffic going to come from, too? What else I got here? In 2009, the planning commission approved this zoning change, but then the bank pulled it, so we're trying to figure out why it was pulled. Guess they didn't have enough votes and they knew it, so here we are again in 2022, and they're not doing it again. That's about all I have. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Charles Jones. Please just state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Charles Jones, 122. Presley Drive. Pardon me, I've gotten over partially the. Expect of a bling, 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 bleed. James here is. Yeah.
My name is James Gunn, I live at 152 Creekwood. Got a couple of things here I'd like to read. Ten years ago, this was tried, and even the former mayor even had something to say about it. Says here, same over rezoning, the volunteer bank sought ten years ago, they paid approximately $500,000 to move a house and improve the lot. All they've done is flattened it out, they really haven't made any improvements. Attended to rezone the lot, Scuttlebutt held that the intent to sell or operate a service station, the sum of 500 seats, lot to pave a driveway, particularly paying $250,000 for further site development for a road. Anyway, the road improvement got shoved aside with comments by former mayor Ashbrooks of Hendersonville and longtime political commentator. He presented a variety of obstructions, the close proximity of driveways to exist in intersection requiring a variance. You know, I mean, there's just no room there. I mean, when you turn in to Creekwood, you're going to be right there in the driveway now in the afternoons during rush hour. If we need to leave the neighborhood, it's so congested you cannot turn to go towards Long Hall of Pike, you just can't. The lights are not positioned in the position that they should be. If the light changes for us to pull out of Creekwood, well, now we've got the crowd coming out of Glenbrook, it's blocking the intersection, you can't get through. You know, you may be able to turn and go towards the bypass, but, you know, that's going to create so much traffic. I mean, we already have people coming down, turning around in my driveway, it happens three, four, or five times every day. I mean, I've had planners out there in my driveway, it's been destroyed because of this. You know, the traffic coming through there is picking up day by day, and if we put something else down there, I mean, there's just no way we're going to be able to get in and out of the neighborhood. There's just no way. You know, we're already dealing with flood issues, and on that end of the street, you know, they build all this, you put that road in, which I don't know why you'd need a road to go through there when you've got entrances and exits to both of those establishments already. That, to me, is just creating an issue by putting this stuff down there. I mean, it's just, you know, but, like I say, I mean, it's been going on now, and of course, the bank, I don't know what their idea was, but, yeah, that's what I say right here, it says, okay, you've got a different one. New Shackle Island necessarily having to meet the same zoning as the outer, other corner, turning our nice little residential entrance into a nightmare, which it's going to do. At that, too, the nightmare faced by local residents next to the businesses and, you know, downturned by the property values. That's another thing we're concerned about in that neighborhood. You know, Mr. Ozbrooks summed it up nicely with the comments, the project should not have made it through the planning, much more so with the zoning committee with so many unresolved issues. There is so much that hasn't been resolved, I mean, it's just going to create an issue for us. We've already got it, and we're just going to make it worse. So, I mean, I don't know what else to do with it.
Two issues.
Sir, can you put the mic closer to him so he can be heard? Thank you.
One issue is. The bikes approach to. The Creekwood. Backhoe. Well, according to Mr. Ozbrooks. Too much. Too close to the light and. The facing. Lot on the corner. According to Mr. Ozbrooks. Would have to. Meet the same rezoning. Restrictions. As the. Lot. Approaching the bike. Insurance.
Is there anything else you have to say?
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about the Methodist Church? Is that the same?
Yeah.
Says here. So now to the Methodist Church across the street. The church has two different outlets, neither of the three pose a danger to the bank or to the various businesses to be housed in the new buildings. The problem is the traffic foul-ups caused by the traffic lights all along New Shackle Island and the vastly overloaded flows caused by our progress. Note that this flow will exacerbate our residential traffic trying to get out of Creekwood in the driveways proceeds, so I'll say no to the driveway, I should think the building development company should seek to come up with a site with less car and truck threatening drivers. All right, that's it. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones, thank you, Mr. Gunn. Next on the list is Tom Wildbiker. I'm sorry, I may have massacred that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could share something while Tom's coming up there?
Go right ahead.
I just want to note while Tom is making his way to the stand, that the planning commission did receive an email from Will Nichols that kind of detailed his concerns about this project, and all the planning commissioners have been giving that information, and we will place that into, into the record as well. I just wanted to make that note.
Okay, can everybody hear me? That's good. Just a little informational thing, I'm sure.
Can you tell your name?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And your address?
My last name is Thomas Wildbacher, but I'm also known as T. Wild. I'm a musician, and I have lived in Creekwood subdivision for 32 years. A lot of you have probably seen me, I'm the guy that waves when I'm walking my dogs, which I have been doing for 32 years in the subdivision, so, yeah. So I can speak also. I want to address a couple of general things that have been spoken about first, but are still very concerning. Because of the concentration of traffic at our intersection from 3:30 on until almost 6 o'clock at night, or if there's a beach ball game or anything going on down that road, it's very dangerous, first of all, just for the residents to pull out on that road. A few weeks ago, I went to make a right turn, and I pulled out far enough, I thought I'd seen around the bushes on the left and all that. To turn on, and in the time that I looked back at my steering wheel and started to turn, there was a Mustang doing 80 miles an hour that almost hit me in the rear end, went completely around me in the wrong lane, passed the Taco Bell exit, hit the gas, and was probably doing 100 miles an hour by the time it got to Stop 30. Now, we put up with stuff like that all the time. A lot of it's frustration because people get blocked, they come off the bypass, they ignore the yield sign, they just shoot straight through there, any number of reasons, none of them are good reasons, and definitely not, they're detrimental to everybody. So we have that situation, we have the crowding there, we have a short light where we can barely get out with five cars to make a turn. At night, with sun is blinding, you can't even tell what color the turn light is. Okay, that's just that intersection. This road, this proposed road, isn't, isn't but, you know, isn't even the distance of a decent side yard for a house to put in, okay? So, what happens? If it goes down and then it comes out farther down the road, what have you got? You've got people who want to try and get ahead of six cars that are backed up, they'll come firing up at there, make a left, and go down there and try and get on, that gets backed up. I've also had some information that there is a sizable offer that was made for the large field past the veterinary office on the other side of it, that, you know, that the church was going to build a school app, but that didn't happen. And so there's also talk about extending, extending the end of either Orchard Valley or Westington, North Westington, all the way over to Stop 30. Okay, because they want to build some kind of a computer factory or something in that, in that big field, okay? So, let's add all this up, okay? So you've got people that are frustrated, they're lined up because they can't get down the main drag. If we have that outlet in the future, we'll have people doing 100 miles an hour down Creekwood just to make a left and try and cut around and get over to Stop 30, okay? Now, I know this isn't totally to do with this, with this driveway or whatever it is, but it has to be taken into consideration because they're going to keep developing down there no matter what happens. So, and I've got nothing against the bank or the vet folks or anything like that, but that's just too close to an already crowded intersection to try and cram in another road, either for making a turn out on the Creekwood or trying to make a left into Creekwood, so. And also, I'd like to see something done to calm the traffic on Creekwood. I don't know how many times I have saved other animals that were out in the street that had to stop traffic because people were barreling through there, a couple of times kids that were stepping in the street. They seem to think it's the drag strip that made the turn on there. So, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you very much. Next on the list is Tommy Boone.
All right, I'm Tommy Boone, 108 Peachtree Lane. I grew up in that area, we had 63-acre farm, the bypass came through the middle of it, we have major flooding problems. I'm the one known as the Red Barn over there that, you know, floods, Mr. Waters, you know who I am. But, you know. You know, I have a problem, if we voted this, if y'all voted this thing down 10 years ago, why has it changed? I mean, I love Cogball State Bank, that's been my bank forever, but if it was Cogball State Bank only coming into there, which originally I thought it was, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but now we've got, you know, the vet opening a new big business. It just seems like, you know, like the man just said, we've got major traffic problems in the afternoons, it's hard getting home. I just retired, and I'm glad I did because I don't have to fight the traffic every day, but, you know, I know Hendersonville's got other traffic problems, but I think we're going to make it a whole lot worse if we let this happen, and I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Next on the list is William Knight. Yeah. I take your Vanna White also, right?
Yeah, I put my name down right after his.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
So we're William and Vanna Knight, and we live at 140 Creekwood Lane for the last 24 years, an awesome neighborhood, it's where I raised my children, I want to keep it a residential neighborhood. It's a great place, but like everyone has already spoken, the traffic situation has gotten a lot worse, especially, I know, just coming from New Shackle and turning right onto my street, Creekwood, I always look in my rearview mirror because so many cars seem like they're upset that I have to turn into my neighborhood where I live, and they want to continue on at a high rate of speed, you know, going straight. So, that's one problem, you know, that I worry about, and this is only going to create more of that. The other thing is that sometimes just coming out of my neighborhood, taking a left where I have the arrow, the people from the shopping center can turn right on red, and they just look, they don't ever look at my street, they only look down New Shackle, and if they don't see anybody, they start to turn, and I've got the arrow, and a lot of times, I've, many, many a time, I've had to stop, or I would run into them pulling out in front of me, but I have the right of way. And another thing I want to talk about is how we have just now, well, last year, we got the drainage problem fixed that was really bad for many, 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 many years, and I came down here and would talk to the roads department, and they would say, you know, we're working on it next year, next year, and then the pandemic, and anyway, it was, the drainage problem was fixed and our road was paved, and it was just the most wonderful, smooth road, and we don't want to tear that up. We have fixed it, we don't want to create any more problems, and I want to keep my neighborhood safe. There's hardly any neighborhoods anymore that are just one way in and one way out. I've never had any crime that, you know, at my house, and I feel like my street is so safe, and that's a great feeling in today's world, that you live on a street that you feel our neighborhood subdivision that you feel is, is safe, and I hope that y'all will respect our neighborhood and let it be. It's been fine, and it can, can continue to be just the way it is.
When I first moved to Hendersonville 23 years ago, when I come home, I've always felt like, 24 years ago, I always felt like I was on vacation, it was such a beautiful, beautiful area. I could probably live anywhere else I want to at this point, I really love Hendersonville, y'all have always done a fine job, and I think y'all see the forest from the trees here, and I hope that this thing doesn't pass. I just think it's hurtful to people, they want to come home and breathe and have a good experience just pulling into their own neighborhood. I mean, that's what I would want for myself, is to be able to pull into my neighborhood without worrying of traffic clutter that could have been avoided. Thank y'all, thank you very much for all your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is David Hill. All right, thank you. Leslie Hill. All right. Kelly Sadler.
Hi, I'm Kelly Sadler. I live at 132 Creekwood Lane. I've lived in the neighborhood for 40, almost 40 years, I think I was six months old when I moved into the neighborhood. Lived at 116 Crestview Drive with my parents, and I bought a house with my husband, and we have two children now. I've lived in Hendersonville since then, since six months old. What's going on over there in our neighborhood is unacceptable. The traffic is horrible, as you've been told by several of our residents in this neighborhood. Not only that, but people who don't even live in our neighborhood are coming in thinking that there's an outlet to get around all the traffic, they're speeding, doing 80 miles an hour or more in our neighborhood, and have about hit my children three times. I don't want this road being built in our neighborhood. There is a house right next to where they want to build this, which is dangerous, especially if that house has children. I don't want this being passed, and I hope that you guys can understand this and accept this and do not pass this. I have spoken to the chief of police, I have spoken to Mayor Jamie Clary on several occasions to try to get something done with the speeding in our neighborhood, and nothing has been done, they have ignored me. I wanted speed bumps put in, they said that's unacceptable, fire and police can't get in the neighborhood, that's a lie, because they can get into the parks with speed bumps. When my children are in danger, that's a problem for me. So, I want this to end today. The building, the putting the roads in is unacceptable on our side of the tracks. I feel like our side of the tracks get looked over, and y'all just keep shoving stuff in over there, and I want it to stop, and something to be done with our roads to protect our children. They said that they would put a speed. They said that they would put a speed radar on the poles in our neighborhood. They have not done that. They've ignored me. I've sent several emails out. All I get is ignored, and I don't know who is responsible and who has the authority to make this happen for no road and to get people to stop driving drunk in our neighborhood and wreck and potentially hit our kids. Something needs to be done, because this is ridiculous. I want it done. No room. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is John Schallenger. I'm sorry. Schalberger, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Okay.
Hey, good evening. My name is John Schalberger. I don't talk real well, but you'll just have to get over it. I live at 113 Crestview Drive, which is way up there, and I've lived there 16 years. A couple of things that I've noticed, maybe this is not directly related, but it is a point of contention, I think. Up until about, I would say, three or four years ago, I would notice a police patrol nearly every day, and if they weren't in there at daylight, at daytime, they were usually in there at night. I haven't seen a police car in there in probably the last three years. I didn't work outside my home. I'm not retired, I just quit. So, I'm quite aware of things that go on in the neighborhood. Second thing, traffic was not nearly as bad at that intersection before Taco Bell and all that center was built. There's pretty much, of course, population increase means traffic increase, business increase means traffic increase. So, I just don't think that what is up for proposal is a realistic situation. The, as the lady just mentioned about speeding and the turnarounds that the gentleman mentioned in his driveway, apparently people don't read what a dead end sign means. People turn around by my house three, four, or five times a day, and I don't know how many times at night. Along with the traffic situation, they did a great job paving the street and getting rid of the drainage problem that was on Creekwood, which in the wintertime used to freeze over and was a definite traffic hazard. One of the latest things that have occurred to me is typically at night, late at night, the speeding on the bypass and in our neighborhood has gotten to the point, it sounds like a drag strip, especially on Friday and Saturday night. I have contacted the police and got nowhere. So, you combine a lot of different things, and I think that this is creating an additional problem. I do have a couple of questions. I'm not a computer guy. I don't even have a computer. Wouldn't know how to use it if I had one. So, I would like to know, in the verbiage here on the fourth point, what is the definition of residential low density? And what is the definition or the scope of office planned development? Are there any plans that have been put forward?
Sir, we're not allowed to answer the questions right now, but after all of you speak, Keith will get up and he will speak to it, and he'll try to explain these points to you.
Well, that's a good thing.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard Inglis.
I'm Richard Inglis. I live at 129 Creekwood Lane. Unlike a lot of the other families here, I've only lived there on that street for two years. I'm a realtor myself. I actually bought the house there because of the in and out, only one way in and out on Creekwood Lane. I feel like that before we try to move on with this, maybe we need to correct the traffic on New Shackle Island first, and then something else could be done, because the traffic is horrible through that whole intersection. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Metrol Smith.
I'm Metrol Smith, and I live at 130 Creekwood Lane, near the creek. We have lived there for over 30 years, and it is a very, very nice neighborhood. Our neighbors are concerned with each other, and we would like for that neighborhood to stay as it is. Also, what is the purpose of putting a road there? And the traffic is already, as others have stated, yes, as others have stated about the traffic. The lane that comes down towards New Shackle, people will come on that side, pass you, and you put your signal light on at the light up there. Instead of them getting behind you, they will pass you, and you already have your light on, your signal light, to turn into Creekwood. But they will pass you and jump right into front of you, and sometimes go from A, B, C. And that's dangerous. And like the light, people will not yield at Glenbrook, and you have the right of way, which was stated, they will just come on out, and there's been several wrecks there. So, why would you want to congest the traffic when it's already congested? Creekwood is a very, very nice neighborhood. Kids walk, the adults walk, and if you put another road there, it's only going to make it more congested. So, we would like for it to stay as it is. We all look after each other. It's a very, very nice neighborhood. The flooding where we live by the creek, when it rains, it gets up, and we've had several wrecks, people speeding and come right into the creek. So, it's a dangerous place coming around the curve where we live, and people, it says 30 miles per hour, but people do not go 30. So, I don't know what the purpose of putting a road there. That's my question. And we would like for the neighborhood to stay as it is, because it's a nice neighborhood. And when you have a nice neighborhood and people look after each other, what more can you have this day and time? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay. Is there anybody that wants to speak that didn't get the chance to speak? Come on up and tell your name and your address, please.
My name is Lynn Ford, and I live on 103 Peachtree Lane. I originally didn't sign up, because if you'll excuse me, when I get up to public speak, I kind of have an out-of-body experience while I'm standing here, and so I did prepare. And I heard everything that everybody said.
Ma'am, can you say your last name one more time?
Sorry, Lynn Ford.
Ford, thank you.
Like a car. And I agree, but one thing I didn't hear was when people go to turn into Creekwood off of New Shackle Island, and then if they want to turn into this so-called road into the bank, and if the traffic's backed up, they come in, they're going to have to wait, and then we're going to have a rear-end collision. I've lived, like everybody else, a lot of people here, I've lived in my neighborhood since 1989. Most of you don't recognize me, but I have been to City Hall over many issues many times. And it says, well, somebody told me, said, "Well, this will be better than, at least they'll keep a fast food restaurant out of that corner." Well, it's the proverbial carrot that they always dangle before us. But there's never, or they say, "Well, we'll put a condition in that this won't happen because you just only have the road." Well, nothing is set in stone. You know, I helped fight against the chemical plating company before Glenbrook, the warehouse company thing before Glenbrook. In fact, I helped to fight Glenbrook and the Triangle area at least a dozen times. How many times do we have to come up here and say, "No, we don't want this. This is our home, our neighborhood. This is, we're not part of a commercial establishment. You shoved all that at us, all of Glenbrook. Okay, we've accepted it, it's convenient." Then you give us the bank. Well, okay, we didn't say anything because it's quiet. Well, we have the Vet, it's quiet. But then you've got this other property, and so then you're going to have a service road all the way down. Where is it going to end? There's property behind there. Where is this commercial stuff going to end? We like our peace and quiet. That's why we moved out there. But don't turn us into part of a commercial establishment. We are not that. We are a neighborhood. You hear the talk about the traffic coming in, going out, going down Creekwood. They turn around at my street, too. We don't want any more people coming and going and coming and going, traffic or no traffic. It brings people that we don't know into our neighborhood. We want to keep our nice, quiet neighborhood. We have put up with enough. Don't shove any more down our throat. There's other fancy neighborhoods, fancier neighborhoods, when they build another neighborhood next to it, they say, "Oh, we don't want to connect the two neighborhoods." But it's okay to connect us to a commercial establishment? I was told, "Well, there's been wrecks coming out of the bank to turn left." Well, do what they do everywhere else. Put up a no-left-turn sign. They should have thought about that before they built the bank, but nobody took us into consideration. Like she said, "We're on the wrong side of the tracks." You wouldn't want this in and out of your neighborhood with a sign, I've heard a sign up there, Volunteer Bank. We don't want to look like we're part of Volunteer Bank. We're Creekwood Subdivision, a neighborhood. As Ms. Smith said, we care about each other. We know each other. Most of us have lived there many, many years, and we want to just keep it as our neighborhood, our home, not a business and not part of a business. So, this needs to stop, and stop shoving this business down our throats that have been done over and over and over again. If we had have had the chemical plating company that I helped fight, we would have had over 300 carcinogenic and poisonous gases over there, because this city did not care. There's no, nothing set in stone, even Glenbrook, nothing at Glenbrook resembles what we were told to begin with. I have the blueprint plat at home that I got from Butch Hutcherson. I have been involved in this city in the past, but after the Triangle area and the fight at least a dozen times up at City Hall, at Old City Hall, I just said, "They don't care about us. Why bother to spend my time?" But this is important. Don't infringe on us anymore. Thank you very much.
We'll close this public hearing, and then after the closure of it, Keith is going to speak, so.
My name is James Gunn, 152 Creekwood.
Okay, sorry, hold on one second. I'm going to have to reopen the public hearing, so I'm opening the public hearing back up for you to speak in your, are you James Gunn?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I can either read these, or we can turn them in, whatever, but, yeah, okay. These are signatures we have gotten from the neighborhood, and it's quite a few that do not want this in our neighborhood. I'm not going to give a street name, but all of them are in the neighborhood. I have them here if you need to see them. Jennifer, I can't really read all these names. This person is at 130, looks like 103 Orchard, Lisa Ross. We have Barry Mendoza, Natalie Schomer, Billy Dotson, Sharon Sneford, I guess, David Lovison, Elizabeth Hedrick, Joseph Estes, Ron Johnson, Mr. Tommy Boone, Linda Turner, Jamie Johnson, Ronnie Watson, Vicki Candiff, Avril Stanis, looks like, all these are in the neighborhood, Kim Zimmerman, James Zimmerman, Betty Collins, and I cannot read this one, I'm sorry, but Jesse Roberts, Brett Tankersley, looks like JB Hemrich, Chris Dorris, John Schadenberg, I guess, Brandy Hogan, Julia Lee, Jimmy Baxter, Robert Little, Tamber Ford, Herbert West, Buddy Dixon, looks like Lynn Taylor, Lindsey Taylor, Harvey Martin, Kelly Sandler, yeah, William J. Knight, Mr. Kenneth Gatewood, Amy Sherlett, it looks like, Randall Cook, Mark and Dee Ray, Virginia Moss, Nick Spear, I really can't read that, Stephanie there at 139 Creekwood, Tony DeVazier, Tina Harper, Debbie Hayes, Jesse Whitley, Rebecca Sanders, Margaret Keschner, I guess, Barry Hardwood, Barbara Bowman, Jared Good, Marion Mark, Ralph, looks like Brewer, maybe, I can't read this one, I'm sorry, Susan Baker, Tina Edwards, the Sullivan family, Joyce Crenn, Karen Tucker, Leslie Clemmons, Jason Elkins, and that is just the names in the neighborhood that we've gotten that are opposed to this.
Okay, if you'll turn those in, we'll put them in their public record. Understood. All right, thank you. All right, this public hearing is closed. Now, we're going to open it up to Keith, and he's going to explain some of the things that you had questions about.
Yeah, I'll just briefly, just to help kind of answer a few of the questions, and the one the gentleman had about what's SR1 and what is that, with SR1, the gentleman asked earlier, what is SR1? SR1, as you can see on the map up there, that's what your neighborhood is. It's a single-family residential, so basically a residential-type neighborhood. What the applicant is requesting, you can see that purple area where it's got O, that's office, and so what they're proposing is for that office to become office plan development, and then for that corner that they're talking about putting the connection access to, to put that as SR1 PD. The developer can, you know, present it later as they're talking about it, but their intent is to keep that SR1 PD, not to make that office PD, but then also limit any ability for any future redevelopment of that property. Of course... Of course, yeah, I can't answer, it's not a back-and-forth.
So you're saying we can put a street in there, but it's still residential, even if it's a street?
Yeah.
Because if your car's going back and forth.
We can't go back and forth.
That's a street, not a driveway.
Sir, at this point in time, the public hearing is closed. We're not allowed to go, but all he is doing is giving you definitions now. We can't interact with you.
So...
He's just going to continue to give you the definition of what you're looking at, so.
Yeah. And then, let me see here, and then the purpose of the roadway or the driveway connection? It's actually a drive, an access to that property. It's not a, it's not a public road or a private road.
Like if you go through a...
Yeah. But the developer can, developer can explain that later. That's something the developer can explain, as well as the developer, yeah, as well as...
Road is access.
Yeah. We'll just go ahead and move on, yeah.
Okay, y'all, we're... Please come to order, come to order, please, okay? We're going to move forward. We're going, we're going to move forward. We're going to hear from the developer next. When the developer speaks, you'll be able to hear what his proposals are and his plans, okay? And then, yes, later tonight, there will be a vote on this subject.
I'll explain that. Yeah, what's going to happen is, this is a, yeah, this is a...
Please come listen.
This is a plan, this is a planned development, so what happens is, is tonight, tonight with the planning commission, so the body that's up here, the planning commission, so they're hearing from the public, and then they're going to hear from the developer, and then the planning commission will make a decision tonight on a recommendation. They're not making the final decision. They're going to make a recommendation that's going to go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. And so then next Tuesday, it'll go to the mayor, it'll go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to the General Committee, and that's just a small committee of Alderman, and then there'll be action there to move it forward to the full BOMA meeting. So basically, what's going to happen is, on next Tuesday, on next, yeah, every, everything that I'm talking about is all open, is all open meetings. And so what's going to happen, the next steps, is tonight, the planning commission will make a recommendation, and that's going to go to your elected officials, your Board of Mayor and Alderman, and then that's going to go to the General Committee on October the 11th. Then they'll have a meeting, I think it's either at 6:00 or 6:30, and then they'll move it forward, and most, in most cases, that's just an action to just move it forward to the full, to full BOMA. And then there'll be a first reading of the ordinance, and that'll be at BOMA with the elected officials. That'll be a first reading on October the 25th at their meeting that's at 7:00. All that's public, and it's all, all open to the public. And then, and then there'll, yeah, and then there'll, then there'll be a, there'll be another public hearing, just like we had a public hearing tonight. There'll be a public, there'll be a public hearing at the second reading of the ordinance at BOMA, and that'll be on November the 29th. So there'll be another hearing. Yeah, okay, and so that's, that's the process.
Okay, that's the process, and I'll speak here. This is where you need to be in touch with your Alderman and let your Alderman know your wishes, and he'll be speaking for you, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, now, next, sir, next, we're going, next, we're going to move towards letting the developer speak, okay? So is there anybody here for the development that would like to speak? Please come up, say your name.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the time to do that. It'd be later, so it's not... Kyle Schneider.
I'm sorry, hold on one second. We have a, we have a second public hearing that we have to address.
And we'll get to that later, sir. Let's do that.
Okay.
After that.
All right, we have a second public hearing to hear comments on the proposed abandonment of an unused public right-of-way located in Center Point Park, Section 6, near the intersection of West Main Street and South Center Point Road. And to my knowledge, nobody is here to speak for that. Did anyone miss it? Okay, nobody in the audience is speaking. So with that, nobody for the city going to speak?
No.
Okay. So with that, we'll close this public hearing. So I'll announce that one as a closed hearing, and then you want to...
Entertain a motion, take a five-minute break.
I'll entertain a motion to take a five-minute break.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I'll say, everybody approve, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody disapprove?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll take a five-minute break. Call it back to order. Ready, Lee? We're going to move ahead. Give the mayor time to quit talking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it. We'll go ahead and go.
All right. Next item on the agenda, number five, is the minutes, the minutes for September 6th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
So you have a second with Charles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention from Ms. Beth. Thank you, Beth. All right, next, number six, final plats. We have two different plats here. One, the first one is 22087001 for Norman Creek, Phase 2B, final plat amendment. Pulte Homes Tennessee Limited Partnership, location East Norman Way on the north side and south sides of Macy Drive. Grant Green was the planning, he's on vacation, so have anything you want to say tonight?
Yeah, it's a well-deserved vacation for Grant. But this is Norman Creek, this is off of Anderson Road, and this is kind of the backside. This is the finish-up of Norman Creek. There's a little area back there that's, that's going to have a cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac in it, and they have a, they have a pretty substantial bridge that's, that's bringing that road into the cul-de-sac. And that bridge was positioned incorrectly, about a foot and a half off, so it's kind of thrown off everything in the cul-de-sac a little bit. But what the developer is requesting, and the, I think, planning staff and public work staff is supportive of it, we require a five-foot grass strip between the sidewalk and the back of the curb, so you can put your street trees and everything into. And so one of the things that we're looking to do to fix, help them fix this, is that we'll put a foot and a half easement along the properties in that area where I think it's the yellow, and we'll put an ax, a public, a public walkway easement there, so the sidewalk could be placed partially on the properties with an easement, and then that'll still give the opportunity for the five-foot grass strip area. So that's kind of everything that I had on that. Both of this one and the other one, they're, they're both related, so both of these could be, they could be grouped, and there may be somebody from the applicant or the developer that could speak to this as well.
Please state your name.
306 Road in Franklin, Tennessee, and I'm representing Pulte Homes, Tennessee. We agree with staff comments and ask for your approval.
Anybody on the commission have questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Well, first off, would you all like to group these? I'll entertain a motion to group them.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second with Wendy. Everybody, everybody in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, you want the roll call? Lauren, we need to do the roll call, sorry. Jumped ahead.
Evans, Hardwick, Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Silkwood, Slattery.
Yes.
And Altizer.
Yes.
That's all eight.
Okay, so we have them grouped. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve these or not. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion from Vanessa, second from Wendy. So, Lauren, we'll take another roll call.
Evans, Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Slattery.
Yes.
Silkwood and Altizer.
Yes.
That's all eight.
Thank you. Okay, next, Section 7, Development Plans. All right, this is 22069001 Volunteer State Bank, okay? CDP Office SR1, OPD and SR1 PD. Owner Volunteer State Bank, location 530, 532 New Shackle Island, and 101 Creekwood Lane Parcels, 145001-00, 060-00 and 060-01. Again, the lead planning is Timothy. Do you want to tell us about it, Timothy?
Sure, I'll just give a brief overview of it. This, this property is currently zoned, office on the existing bank lot, and then the vacant lot to the north is office. As we discussed, the corner lot to the south is currently zoned SR1. So a little bit of history, back in 2009, the bank submitted a master plan proposing to rezone the corner lot to General Commercial Plan Development, GCPD, to allow a driveway to cross it and connect to Creekwood. It was, the plan was approved by the planning commission, and then the developer pulled it before it actually got to a vote at BOMA. Now, fast forward to today, they're proposing a plan development, keeping the base zones the same, so office on the bank, office on the vacant lot to the north, SR1 on the corner lot to the south, and putting a plan development overlay over all three lots. On the, on the corner lot, they are proposing a driveway to connect the bank to Creekwood Drive, and on the vacant lot to the north of the bank, they're proposing an office building and associated parking. On the SR1 corner lot, they have added a restriction that there could be no structure put on the, I'm sorry, there could be no structure built on the lot, it's a non-buildable They have provided the required 20-foot landscape buffer along the property line that's common to the residences there on the, on the east side of the property. They have agreed to all staff comments, and that concludes my report.
Jason, can the volume be turned up in the, in the meeting room, or is it already at the total? Well, one of the things we can do is maybe go a little closer with our mics, so if anybody's speaking, we'll try to go a little closer. I think it's up about, about as loud as we can, we can go, but we can get a little bit closer to the mic. Is that, is that, do you kind of hear me? Okay, so we'll, we'll try to speak a little bit closer if, if folks are having difficulty, because we definitely want you to hear us. Okay, thank you, Chairman. No, that's it, that's all.
The developer, if you'd like to come up and speak, please state your name.
Kyle Schneider with Clover Engineering, representing the owners of Allstate Bank. Happy to answer any additional questions that you might have concerning the development.
Anybody from the zoning commission have questions?
One of, one of the things that, that maybe unless the commissioner had it, is one of the questions that was asked is the, the desire or the need for the connection, and maybe as the developer's representative, it's just addressing... representative, it's just addressing what, why it is that that connection is desired.
Right, right. Yeah, so I mean, the cross-access easement connection, whatever you want to call it, I mean, it's, you know, it's a two-lane road that's gonna give relief to anybody using the bank or the office who would try to be turning left onto New Shackle Road going south, they can come down there, turn, hit the light, go in left instead, you know. It's a in, out, you know, left, there's no restriction to that existing entrance, as is, I don't know if making it a, you know, right-out only would do anything, all it would do is just force people to go up north, turn around at the vet office and come back down south, it wouldn't alleviate the problem at all. So just trying to, you know, with any additional traffic that would be caused by the office development, which, the office development is a lower-density usage office development, you know, it would be, you know, low-density medical or mortgage services, probably something related to the bank, financial institution, I think we have proposed there 35 parking spots, so it is not a great amount of extra traffic that would be generated by that, but it would, it would just, it's a relief, you know, from that left turn onto New Shackle. I mean, it's busy, everybody knows it's busy, so just helping, relief there, that's really the point of that cross-access road down there.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Vanessa.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, talk to me a little bit more about Creekwood Lane and the intersection there at New Shackle. Is there a dedicated left-turn lane there already?
I don't believe, I think it's just a single-lane, you know, left-turn, right-turn straight. I don't know, I don't believe a traffic study was done for this, I mean, you know, I would venture to guess that almost 95% of the people using that access are gonna turn right onto Creekwood and hit the light. Whether to put in a left turn and a right turn at that light would have to be probably coordinated with TDOT, as that's a state highway, and coordinated with them and probably justified with a traffic study.
Okay, Timothy, could you speak to that? Right, and how difficult it would be to add that?
I don't believe there's a left-hand turn lane there, but I believe Stephen could speak to the difficulty of adding it.
Oh, thank you. Well, as far as adding a turn lane there, there would obviously have to be some road widening, it appears now that there's maybe 26 feet of pavement, a lane width is usually about 11 to 12 feet wide, so there would probably be a requirement for dedicating some right-of-way, and then there would be the coordination with TDOT.
So, and they have that incomplete empty lot to work with, correct?
That is a lot that could be worked with as far as dedicating some right-of-way, yes, I believe that could happen.
So, I mean, is that something that's feasible, that's something that would help alleviate traffic?
Yeah, I mean, it's something we could look into, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but, you know, it doesn't take a genius to know that somebody's gonna turn right there and probably try to turn left onto New Shackle Road, the heavy amount of traffic right there is gonna be turning left, the residents leaving that subdivision are trying to turn left. Our road, our connection onto Creekwood is approximately 180 feet from the intersection there, so I don't know how much, you know, depth of that left turn we'd get, and I wouldn't want it, you know, if somebody, if somebody was turning right onto Creekwood to turn in left there, you know, you don't necessarily want to create a left turn, you know, a conflicting left turn, but I mean, it's something we can look into, I mean, we're, you know, we hear the community neighborhood issues, you know, we're not, you know, not trying to create an issue, Allstate Bank is a local bank, it's not a, you know, national bank, it's not a Taco Bell, it's not a, you know, large franchise, and really, this is three parcels that they're gonna try to put two businesses on, you know. So they're just trying to help alleviate their existing site issues, I mean, that's kind of the initial phase of this, is really that cross-access road, and I mean, whatever it takes really to look into possibly, you know, come into a, you know, solution there, whether it's that left turn, right turn, you know, you know, we're open to look into options, for sure.
Thank you, I mean, obviously, I'm not a traffic engineer either, I'm just trying to see solutions, you know, because you have a community who's pretty upset, I would be upset, you know, if I couldn't get in and out of my neighborhood because, you know, now we have commercial access in the neighborhood that they didn't anticipate, so I'm just, you know, turning to you to work and try to find a better solution.
Absolutely.
I mean, in my opinion, obviously, you know, not expert opinion, but you do have the space there in that empty lot to do something.
Right, no, I mean, Creekwood could definitely be widened, I mean, that's like we've stated, it's a dedicated open space, you know, it would just be widening it and, you know, matching the existing pavement conditions, you know, any stormwater infrastructure, utility, relocation there, to help, just, you know, alleviate any traffic there, any additional traffic.
Any other commissioners? Go ahead, Mr. Estes.
I have a procedural question, I guess. We've had the public hearing, and we have closed it. But I think the bank needs to reevaluate that intersection, and maybe give us some options on how you can improve that intersection. I've heard comments about potential, maybe misalignment of lanes with the traffic signal that currently exists, and how you would fit a turn lane in, and, you know, and how it might work, you know, is there a median divide needed? I know at Winston Hills up here at that Walgreens, you know, their entrance to the rear on Winston Hills, I believe it's Winston Hills, is back about that distance, but there's a divided street out front with some turn lanes and whatnot, and as Silkwood has indicated, you got all the right-of-way you need over there for dedication to make this thing work. Now, we've had the public hearing, can this thing be delayed for them to go make some additional design improvements and work with the neighbors, and come back without having to have another public hearing, or how would, I don't know how this would work.
Yeah, so procedurally, how that would, how that would work is, I think, in order to, oh, I'm sorry, procedurally, the way to make that work is the applicant could request deferral, and the planning commission could consider it, or the planning commission could defer, and we could bring this up at our, at our next meeting in November. What I think, if that occurred, I think the action the planning commission would need to take is then after that, then, or as a part of that deferral include that it will reopen the public hearing, and the public hearing will be still active, and it'll be on the agenda at the next, at the next meeting, then that way, it wouldn't have to be republicized, everybody here would be aware of that, and we could update that information on our website as well, so that might be a way to do it, where we didn't have to necessarily go back through that whole publication process, because I think everybody here will be aware of what that, of what that is, so that's, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I think, I think the primary concern is that access point, because the bank could build that other project without a rezoning.
Right.
The rezoning and the development plan is for the purpose of getting that access to Creekwood Lane, so that needs to be thoroughly addressed, in my opinion, you know, with what our options are based on what I've heard tonight, before we proceed. So, I will be glad to make the motion that it be deferred, the public hearing.
That's cleaner.
Held open for our next meeting, in the event I can get a second to that.
We could.
So, you know, you heard a couple of options from Keith, okay, so what's in the best interest of the bank here, best interest of the city, I think, I think you guys are probably getting a strong inclination that it would be best for you guys to go back, read, look at this, and probably talk to your neighbors that are in that area, and bring it back at some future time with some amendment that all of you see fit, okay? So, I think it's a little cleaner if you guys do the motion and the moving of withdrawing this, okay? But, we're wide open to hear your opinion.
We'll defer.
Okay, so it's deferred, now. Keith, back to the conversation around the next meeting, will, if they have not moved faster.
Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to vote to accept the deferral, and partially as a part of that, what we can do is, and then reopen the public hearing, and then what we can do, what the, Lauren, I think what we can do on that is we'll still send the same letters that we sent out to everybody within 250 feet, so we'll still do that, even though the public hearing's open, we'll still do that, and then that way, that'll give that notice to folks as well, and we'll keep the sign out there as well.
So, that means we have to entertain a motion to, let's see, how do we, how do we say this?
To accept the motion to defer.
Motion to defer.
Yeah, accept the request from the applicant to defer.
Okay.
And reopen the public hearing, to where, then, when this is next on the agenda, if it's next, if it's next month, then that'll be opening on the agenda, because what we, what we want to do is if it come, if you defer it, if you accept the deferring, and it comes back, we want the opportunity to have a public hearing where people can, you know, people can express their thoughts on the, if there is a newly revision to this intersection, so people can see it, and then they can, they can comment on it, we don't want it where there is any opportunity, you know, for the public to speak to it.
Okay, well, I'll try to make this motion to keep it clean, tell me where I go wrong, okay? I'm gonna make a motion to accept the applicant's deferral, leave the public hearing open, and it will be reheard at a future date yet to be determined, okay? And I need a second to that motion, is that all clean?
Yeah, so one, just one clarification is that the public hearing will remain open only if there's resubmission, and it's on the next month's agenda, because if it drags out, then we just want to kind of start all over with the, with the notice.
Okay.
So people are aware of what's going on.
So that's the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second from Vanessa, so Lauren, will you call the roll?
Evans?
I'd like to speak on the motion, I've got my light on.
I'm sorry.
Am I wrong here?
Nope, you're right, before we move forward, you're exactly right, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you, and I'll try to be brief. I moved here 30 years ago, and Hendersonville was a town of 25,000 people, since then, the population has more than doubled, we're all acutely aware of the traffic, the traffic has gotten faster and more aggressive, we're all trying to negotiate that, but also 30 years ago, I was told that Old Shackle Island Road and realignment was gonna be done up there. Well, 30 years later, and much gnashing of teeth and lots of millions of dollars, and if the plans are like they were when I saw them about 10 years ago, we have exactly the situation we're about to create here. We have a cake shop over there, we have a music store, and we have an auto repair facility, and they all try to get out on Old Shackle Island Road in traffic and can't. So the solution is that TDOT has created a side road for those businesses to come out on the highway. So, what I'm saying is, I'd like for you to look at something else besides bringing that road in there, because I'm gonna be a no vote on that.
Any other commissioners have anything? Comments? So, we have a motion, and we have a second. So Lauren, we're ready for you to call the roll.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire? Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood? Slattery?
Yes.
And Altizer?
Yes.
That's all eight.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, come on up, come to the stand. Turn, you're on.
Thank you, Jim Waters, Alderman, Board Six, I want to clarify one thing with the board here, because some of these people, we've been talking during your break, are thinking they're gonna have to come back at the general committee in two weeks, and then another BOMA, first BOMA reading, so we need to clarify that with them, that they don't have to worry about coming to the general committee or the first reading of BOMA, okay?
Yes, sir, yeah.
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Alderman Waters.
Thank you.
Yeah, with this, with this deferral, so everything we talked about before, that was if the planning commission was gonna make a recommendation, since now the applicant is deferred, and so this won't be going to the general committee next Tuesday, or to BOMA, or forward to BOMA, it's reset and gonna be coming back, so we're gonna kind of repeat tonight, but hopefully, maybe with a different, some added version to this from the, from the applicant, and on, on moving forward, so there's not, and then even, even once it moves from the planning commission, it goes to BOMA General, it goes to the first reading of BOMA, there's not really necessarily, you're worthy welcome, but there's not a reason necessarily to go to the BOMA General Committee, that's just kind of a transfer committee to get it to BOMA. What happens a lot of times is there's not a public hearing on that first reading, when it eventually may go to BOMA, but sometimes people will speak, there won't be a public hearing, but sometimes people might want to speak at Citizens Comment, so that's allowed, but then really, the next opportu, the final opportunity is that last second hearing at BOMA, where there'll be another public hearing. But from tonight forward, with the deferral, it's not moving forward to BOMA, so there's not another meeting, but just kind of keep up with this, and if you had a question, or it gets kind of lost in everything that's going on, feel free to call the planning office anytime through this process, if you just want to say, hey, where, where exactly is this, you know, where, where is it gonna be, is it gonna be on next month's agenda? Hopefully, maybe sometime here in the next two weeks, we'll have some, some direction from the applicant on what their intentions are, and we could share, share that with everybody, so. That's up to the chairman.
Sir, sir, we're not supposed to entertain the back and forth in the questions, okay? So, do this, okay, this is the direction I'd give you, take your questions, call directly back to the city at a later time, and see if they can answer that question directly for you. And, and I'm sure it's gonna continue to change now, okay, and you should start hearing more back and forth with the developer, okay?
And they can call me if they have any specific questions.
And you can call Keith if you have any specific questions anytime during the work week, okay? And we'll do our best to answer your question then. Thank you, I appreciate all your comments, everyone. All right, we're gonna be moving ahead, section eight, site plans, 22-058-001 Avonita at Indian Lake Village Carport Setback Variance, also known as the Album Site Plan, owner Avonita Partners LLC, location 109 Cinema Drive, parcel 146074.00. Timothy, you have this one?
Yes, sir. So, the album-
So, uh, the, the album slash Avenida is, they're getting pretty close to the end of, of, uh, construction of their site. They are requesting to add four carports behind the building. They've currently got approved, on the approved site plan, they got, I think, five garages, uh, which are the, the orange boxes, uh, kind of removed from the main building. But they're wanting to add these carports, these open carports behind the building. Two of them will be, would be immediately behind the building, then two more across the drive aisle, right up against that, um, that west property line. And those two that are in purple there would, uh, the way they're drawn currently, those would encroach 18 feet into the platted 25-foot minimum build, rear building setback. So they are requesting to change that rear setback from 25 feet to seven feet, which would accommodate the, the full extent of the, of those two carports. On page three, Verstappen Port, you can see the master plan for this phase, which shows what's planned for that adjacent lot, about 10-acre parcel to the west. That shows a kind of a big box or medium box, uh, shopping center that backs up to this, uh, with about 25-foot, uh, landscape area to the back of it. So that's, that's the master plan. Again, they're requesting, um, to change the setback from 25 feet to seven feet.
Any questions? I see Beth has a question, go ahead, Beth.
Yeah, what I'm seeing up there and what I'm seeing on the, the handouts that we have don't match.
They should. It's, it's, yeah, that, that should be the same image that's on your sheet there, the one that's up on the screen.
Okay.
Do you see it, Beth?
Yeah.
Right, the cinema, the, the theater would be to the north of this, across, across the parking lot that you see there at the top of the screen.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right, and then that big building down to the south, that's where, uh, First, uh, First Love Coffee and, um, Just, Just Love Coffee and the cute self-storage facility are located.
Right.
And, and one thing, one thing I might add is that, that area that you see in blue on your sheet and purple on the screen, that area currently already is approved as parking spaces. And they're looking to cover that with these carports.
And the, the red line designates the existing rear setback that they're seeking to, to change.
So where are they, point out, Timothy, where they are taking this 25 feet?
So this is, um, up there on the screen, you see the two oblong rectangular areas.
Yeah.
That, that's existing parking, surface parking that they're wanting to cover, put this covered parking. The covered parking is, it is the image you see to the right. So they'd have two of those covered parking structures, uh, sitting on top of the surface, uh, parking lot.
They're just dressing it up a little.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right?
Correct, just putting it, putting a cover over it, open-sided cover to, that people can park there and get in and out of their car outside of the rain.
Go ahead, Vanessa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Timothy, just, just so we're clear, so the, the backside of the carports would face a future yet to be built, the backside of a retail space, correct? So this would not, there wouldn't be any, you know, public space, let's say, between the backside of this carport and the backside of a future retail space, correct?
That, that's correct. Uh, I will, I will say, um, there's a possibility that you may see in the short, or before too long, uh, an amendment to this master plan to do something a little bit different. We don't know what those plans are, I'm just, you know, again, this is the plan that's in place. If anybody wants to change it, they've got to come back to you. But there, there are, we have been getting questions about doing something a little different on that west, west lot there.
Any other commissioners, sir, go ahead, John. I see both of you let up now.
Go ahead.
We'll start with you, John.
I'm good.
You were first.
I, I just want to let you all know that I had a root canal this morning, but I, I think I'm over it. So, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe I didn't hear this. Did we not already waive the setback for those other two garages? Didn't somebody say that already? The, the two on the north side? Did that not come up before this board already? We waived it seven feet for someone for identically the same situation for.
I'm remembering that too, but I think it was the other property. I think it was one of the other senior living, or 55-plus properties.
It could have been, Timothy, I don't.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't recall. It, it looks like those maybe, I don't know, are those garages 25-foot off already? Um, where the garage is?
There was only seven feet that we were asked to approve for them to be over the line because they needed it to, to push them back a little further or something.
Yeah, I'm just.
I believe the developer would, may be able to answer our question, your question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
I'm Tom O'Brien, consultant and representative of, uh, Avenida Partners in Newport Beach, California. I think what you're remembering is that we re, we submitted this originally in August, asking for the change in the setback, I believe it was August. And we, we deferred it because the, uh, Indian Lake Village Design Review Committee had a concern about the fact that the original carports had metal roofs and their rules don't allow, their design guidelines don't allow metal canopies. So we have redesigned the, uh, carport so that they have shingle gabled roofs. So that's probably what you're, you've seen it before, but it was never approved or anything. So we're, we've, uh.
Okay.
We've brought the design in line with the Indian Lake Village and, uh, now we're asking for approval on the setback variance.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm 70 years old and I don't have a very good memory. So I'll, I'll, I'll accept your explanation of that. Point being, however, that, uh, what would keep someone from coming in and asking for a waiver on the other side of those garages, on the other property? And when do we draw the line on, please do your design and put it on your piece of property without encroaching on everyone else? We, we've gotten to the point that we're building something on every postage stamp-sized piece of ground that we've got. And you just heard the people talking about people, traffic congestion, infrastructure. We've got those issues and, uh, I, I know that this is a very small thing in that regard, but, uh, it's still a structure inside the setback. So I can't do it.
Okay. Barry, you are up.
So I just want to make sure I understand, we've already put parking in here. All we're doing is just putting cover over the parking.
Yes, sir. Any other commissioners with comments? Go ahead, Lee.
Did the Indian Lake Village approve this design?
They have, and we have a letter, there was a letter with our submission.
Yes, yes. We did receive that.
They have approved it and, uh, in writing and we, we turned in a letter, we turned in their approval letter with the submission.
And do you currently have garages at this development?
Yes, sir, we do, we have five.
And did these carports, is that what you're calling them? Is it a carport?
Well, we like parking structure.
Parking, does this, does this parking structure match the garages?
It basically is the garages without the walls. It's the garage roofs, gables, same shingles, same roof slope, same paint scheme. But instead of walls, they'll be, the roof will be supported by brick piers.
Okay, that's all I needed, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other commissioners? Go ahead, Wendy.
Timothy, I need your help understanding. There was already parking approved here.
Yes, ma'am.
The only reason that we now need to encroach into the 25-foot building setback is because this is a structure.
Correct.
And I think I agree to some degree, I agree with, with Commissioner Evans' comment that I understand it's not a big deal and I understand that this is going to be facing the back of other retail space. But all of the, it's okay, it's okay, is because whatever is built on the other piece of property is going to have the buffer, is, is going to have the 20-foot wide landscape area buttoning up to the common property line. And the shopping center building sits about 70 feet beyond that landscape area. We're, I, I don't like, I don't like waivers just because it's a president's and it's a slippery slope. And we're all driving on those slippery slope roads right now. So it concerns me that one developer that just seems to be ahead in their development, then another piece of property yet to be developed is sort of first man to the buffet and gets all the, the waivers and all of the, the encroachment allowances. And the next person up, the next development up, we've, we're relying on the, the good grace of that development not to require any of those. So it, it does make me nervous that we continue to encroach and pray that the next one doesn't want encroachment. Then pretty soon we've got about a lawn mower width that landscaping companies are fighting over who's going to, going to mow. So, um, that concerns me. Thank you.
Any other comments, any more discussion? All right, then we move ahead with a vote. I'll take a motion. Anyone has? Yeah, I need a motion with all staff comments. No, I need a motion, I'm asking for one. Yeah, if anybody wants to offer a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second it.
You got to test the will, all right. So Lauren, you ready for a roll call?
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Longmire?
No.
Silkwood? Slattery?
No.
And Altizer? That is four and four, uh, the project does not pass, or the motion does not pass.
Next on the list, 22 dash 082 001 Southern Nurseries Soil Shed Site Plan, eight 29, S829, I'm not sure what that means. Owner, Terry Flat, location 136 Center Point Road South, parcel 161042 dash oh oh. Timothy, can you tell us about it?
Yes, sir, this is located on South Center Point Road, uh, west of Center Point. It's east of Mansker Creek, you see the creek there, the dashed line on the, on the left. This, uh, the, the future Rhythm Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram dealership will be on the parcel to the north. This property is owned industrial. It, around sometime in, in 2020, the nursery, Southern Nurseries, uh, built a pole barn over an old mulch and soil, uh, containment bin. They did not get, uh, any, uh, site plan approval or building permits. You can see from the pictures what kind of what it looks like. Uh, basically, it's an open-sided, uh, pole barn, except that the, uh, this big kind of, uh, Jersey barrier, uh, blocks there that formed up the side of the mulch slash soil containment bin. They're stacked high enough that they sort of form a partial wall. And the blocks are in effect kind of forming the siding or the, or the facade of the pole barn. We don't have anything in our building design standards that speaks to, um, using this sort of block as, as siding. So they're requesting approval of the building as it is. Of course, they, if this is approved, they'll still have to, uh, meet or try to meet building code for the, for the building. So they'll have to go through that process. They are proposing, um, some mans, uh, evergreen landscaping along the north side of the property. Basically, the length of the building to help screen the building from the future dealership to the north. And they have agreed to all staff comments.
Commissioners, any questions, comments, any discussion? Okay, uh, would you like to speak? Tell us about it, tell us your name.
Yes, sir, my name is Kurt Dryden, I'm general manager of Southern Nurseries. And we do agree to all staff comments on the building. So willing to put in any landscape barriers that we need to, to, you know, to make sure we're in code and, and also get the structural engineer reports and everything that was said in the comments.
All right, commissioners, you have any questions for you?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, it, it's, it's lamentable that you all didn't come before this body or get a building permit to, to build, you know, a proper, proper structure. So now we're sort of in this boat. So has a structural engineer looked at this, at this structure and, and given their approval? Where are we with that process? I mean, it says, it's agreed to all staff comments, I'm assuming that's included? Is that where we are?
So we just got the comments back, I think last week is when we got those back. So we have not been able to get a, a structural engineer out there yet.
So if, if the building passes structural muster, why not just clad it in something that isn't approved building? Yeah, siding or, you know, what, whatever would be an approved material. Why not do that as opposed to just putting landscaping there?
I mean, like I said, whatever we need to do to get the, the building in, you know, in, in permit with the city, we're willing to do. So I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a rebuttal to, to what you're saying.
Well, I mean, from my perspective, I think you all should, should cover it in something that's an approved material, as long as it, you know, passes structural muster. I would much prefer that as opposed to leaving it as is and just covering it with landscaping.
So I mean, it, the, the landscaping is going to be, i- is it possible to get the other picture up there with landscape? And so that, that's, the landscaping is going to be roughly about, I think it's about 75 feet. The building's 50 feet wide, so I think it's about 75 feet away from the building. And we plan on doing the, uh, what was recommended were minimum 10-foot height. So we're going to do the green giant arbividas along the, the property line on the north side to cover it. So I mean, it would never be seen past that, it would never be seen from the road from the, the west where Center Point, I'm sorry about that, where Center Point comes down. The, uh, I can't remember exactly how far it is from Center Point Road to the back of the property, but it's, it's a couple hundred yards at least back there. So I mean, the, the building would never be seen from, from anybody else, other than just on site. So functionally, it, it performs what we needed to do.
I'm waiting to be recognized. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So thank you for clarifying. So actually, the landscaping is not going to be right next to the building. It's actually going to be on the property line. I missed that somehow.
That's where it was recommended in staff comments.
Okay, got it, okay. Um, again, I'm going to go back to my original comment. I'd much prefer that it's, you know, if this passes structural muster, that it's clad in something that's an approved building material, um, as opposed to just leaving it as is and putting up some landscaping. So that's my comment, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes, thank you. I, I would like to recommend that this is deferred until you hear back from your structural engineer.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other comments? Barry, go ahead.
Couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
One, one is for staff. If this did not get approved, will they have to take the structure down?
Yes, sir.
So they'll have to pull it down?
Correct.
The, for, for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Were you guys looking to build a pole barn? Were you guys looking to build a pole barn to basically cover the mulch so that you work out of the weather, or?
It covers the topsoil during, mainly during the winter, winter months when it's, you know, when it's wet outside. Just keeps the topsoil dry.
Okay, so you were looking to do more of a carport like what we were talking with the other folks versus having an enclosed building?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And you're gonna landscape, I guess this is between himself as well as, as Timothy, we're landscaping around the property line so that what's back there is, is covered or screened? And you guys will require that it be mature trees, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, sir. So that, they, they could put the landscaping right up against the side of the building. But my thought was by moving it to the edge of the property, you're not only screening that portion of the building, you're from, from that.
You're screening the whole, the whole thing.
Everything else is gone.
Understand.
And, and that is screening, you know, putting it on the property line, that to the north, that's where the Jeep dealership is going to be. So by putting that screening on the property line, it kind of screens the backside of that, uh, to, to this industrial property.
Any other comments, one, from anyone?
Question. How, how tall is the building?
Sorry, I didn't see your mic.
To the, to the peak of the roof, about 20 feet roughly.
And the trees you're planting to put in are what?
They, they recommended a minimum of 10 foot at planting, and of course, they'll keep.
And those are evergreens that are probably gonna stay 10 or 12 feet? Arbor vitas, what, what are we talking about there?
No, sir. They, they will grow.
They will grow tall.
Very, yeah. They'll grow over 20 feet.
Well, so they'll get there, they'll get up there before the Jeep dealership goes in.
Oh, yes.
No, I wouldn't say that. It'll take a while. They are fast growing, though.
I like her comment.
Yeah. All right, any other comments? You heard the recommendation from Mr. Peterson. Do you have any comments on that?
No, sir.
About deferring?
I mean, whatever we, honestly, just whatever we need to do, you know, under y'all's recommendation, we're willing to do to, to move forward.
Do you want to defer? Do you wanna pull this tonight? Do you wanna defer until you get your engineer's comments? I think that would, that would be better for you to defer.
Okay, if we didn't defer, what would that, what would that look like? If we just wanted to, 'cause we, we plan on starting this, this week, trying to hire a structural engineer. So I guess I'm asking just what, what's the difference?
I'm gonna tell you what I think and let Keith jump in. I think if you don't defer and you get a no vote from this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's probably worse for you in the long run.
Okay, yeah, whatever we need to do.
The, the commission here is trying to hear that the engineer claims that the building's good, that it's good to stay. And I think if you defer, get your, all your ducks in a row, it'll be better for you in the long run.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I think there's, there's just two, you requesting, so you formally requesting for the planning commission to defer.
Yes, sir.
And then what, and then I think the expectation of the planning commission, from what the commissioners have said, is they wanna see that engine, that structural engineer's report to make sure the building is structurally sound.
Sure.
Plus, uh, they'd like for you to consider looking at some approved cladding that would cover the outside of it. And so I think those are really the two specific issues. But then also continuing with a buffer, uh, along the property line as well.
Sure, yes, sir.
Okay, do I need to do a motion for, to accept this defer?
Yeah. So you just need to formally say, hey, I don't.
I, I would like to defer this, please.
I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry, you gotta lead the horse to water, sorry.
Okay, I got a second. Lauren, will you call the roll?
Yeah.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire? Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood? Slattery?
Yes.
And Altizer.
Yes.
That's all eight.
So, so what, what you'll do is?
Yes, sir.
Get your structural engineer stuff.
Okay.
Can, uh, get with Timothy, figure out maybe what kind of cladding you could put on the outside of it that would meet the requirement, and that way you don't have to request a waiver.
Yes, sir.
And then bring all that back, and once you get all that back, we'll put you back on, on the agenda. And you'll come back and we'll, we'll kind of replay this again, uh, with some more information.
Okay, sounds good. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, 22-081-00001, Walmart 1376 Exterior Color Change Site Plan. Owner, Walmart Stores, location 204 Anderson Lane North, parcel 159BB015.00. Timothy, will you tell us about it?
Thank you. The, uh, the image there on the top, uh, shows what Walmart currently has in terms of building color. So the, the blue, uh, frames around the two entrance points, uh, is what, uh, staff approved some years ago. At the time, uh, at the time they had asked for, for more blue, they'd asked basically for what you see below, that the bottom image. Staff was not comfortable approving that. Our building design standards, uh, limit the amount of bright colors you can have on a building to trim. Staff's feeling was at the time that, that, uh, the bottom image kind of went over that line. So fast forward to today, or, or this month, they have come back with another request to increase the amount of blue. Again, staff is not comfortable approving that. So they are, uh, we let them know that they would need to seek that approval from the full planning commission. So they have read all staff comments. And this, this is the blue color. I'll pass this down so you can see the exact shade of blue.
Say that again, Timothy.
Right. And I'll pass it. These are the other colors.
All right. Anything from the applicant? There, he got it.
Hello.
Sorry.
Kevin Spurgeon, uh, address 1231 North Pierce in Wichita. I work for LK Architecture, who in turn is an agent for Walmart Stores, Inc. And Walmart across the country, um, is rebranding their buildings. And, and this is pretty typical with what they are doing across the country with, uh, upgrading their brand identity, adding more of the, what we refer to it as P76 Sherwin-Williams Blue to their building. Making the, the entrances, uh, more prevalent, I guess, on the front elevation.
Any questions from the planning commission? Any comments?
I have some.
Go ahead, Beth. Sorry.
So where else has this been done that's close to us?
Close to you. The store, the stores that I'm working on are in Richmond, Virginia, Germantown, Maryland. My coworkers, I, I'm not sh- we have, we have so many stores. We are working on, uh, pretty much across the, the east, the east coast.
But, but you don't know of any place in Tennessee? Anything's been done? I don't know. That's not what you named is.
Okay, so a, a number of years ago, I worked on a store in Mount Juliet, Tennessee. And when that, I don't know if that store is being worked on, but that store would be up. Any, any, any Walmart store that's being remodeled will be presented with the brand identity program, which will, um, have an increase in the, the, the paint scheme and going from kind of the lower part of the entry to the upper part of the entry.
But there's nowhere you can tell us that we could go and look at it?
No.
We're just supposed to blindly say, I like that picture?
Well, I mean, no, you, you either, I mean, you either like it or you don't like it.
Well, it's a lot of blue.
It, it's, it is typical with the Walmart, with their new brand identity program that they're incorporating with, with all their stores that they are remodeling. And I think this year they're doing probably 500, 500 stores.
Well, for instance, the store that we have on Anderson Lane.
Okay.
That's kind of just there with itself. It's not backing up to our neighborhood. It just seems to me that you want us to, you want us to approve something that is a little bit bold. I'm not saying that's bad.
Right.
It is a little bold, but you want us just to approve that, and you don't have anywhere for us to see it? You can't show us pictures of it? You've just got a drawing. I think that's a big step.
I could, I could defer and come back with pic, with dozen scores of pictures showing where we've incorporated it a- across the country. I mean, if, if, if that's what it takes to get it approved. I mean, Walmart is just trying to be, uh, consistent in their design, and so that's, and, and that's part of this process. They're just trying to.
Hey, Beth, let me interrupt you for a second. Keith wants to speak for it.
Yeah, um, on this, with Walmart, of course, you know, the majority of Walmarts in other communities have a whole lot more blue than that, but the, our Walmart is located in a planned development. And so when that planned development was originally approved several years ago, the colors were restrained, probably at that time, what they wanted to do. Uh, the image that was, uh, that was up there, that Timothy was talking about, uh, you know, what you see today, I approved that in-house a couple of years ago, about two years ago. Uh, but they wanted to do the more blue, and at that time, we kind of worked with Walmart and came to kind of a settlement on what staff was comfortable with. But this, the blue that they want to do now, it certainly, I think, I think, as the gentleman said, they could give you hundreds of examples. I think what's the main thing to keep into mind is that this store is in Hendersonville, it's in a planned development. There's a certain look to that planned development. We, you know, although we like color, uh, we prefer brighter colors to be used in a more accent, you know, type of way, and not to, not to dominate the architecture. And, uh, and so that's kind of, you know, why we're, you know, why we're looking at that. But I think the representation that, that they, that the applicant has provided on that bottom, I think that's a pretty good indication of what it's going, of what it's going to be. And I would say the majority of other Walmarts, unless it's in a historical designated area, uh, would probably have even much more blue, uh, than, than that, and wouldn't have all the nice brick and things, you know, and the details, uh, that we have on, on our, our facade.
Beth, do you have anything else? Any, any other questions?
I mean, I'm not opposed this to be opposed.
Okay, that's fine. Wendy, I saw you in the queue.
Yes, thank you. Um, I certainly appreciate the importance of branding and maintaining a brand standard. I think it's also important to recognize that this is part of our community. It, it's a retail space, and you obviously know where it's located. If this were on a main thoroughfare with a lot of retail competing visually with it, I would appreciate the greater need to establish your brand. But by the time someone turns in that parking lot, Google Maps has already told them they're going to Walmart. They're not looking for Walmart by the time they see your building. I applaud the investment and, and the refresh in the property. That certainly keeps us looking the way we wanna look as a community. I would prefer that that money be spent on other ways, in the parking lot and in the landscaping that's woefully needed some attention around that property, which is also part of the branding that a, an entity should be concerned about. I am not in favor of all of the additional blue. I don't think it's needed. I appreciate, um, the corporate desire to do it, but I have a stronger affinity for the look and feel of our community and what we try to maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Vanessa, I saw you in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too appreciate Walmart being in Hendersonville. I'm a frequent flyer. I shop at Walmart quite a bit. But I do have to agree with Commissioner Slattery and also, um, what Director Free said as far as, you know, it, it needs really to be more congruent with the planned development that it is a part of. So I, I would be much more comfortable with what Director Free had already approved in terms of having more of an accent color rather than the bold depiction you have below here. So I would also be a no vote. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Have any comments? Anyone? All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody wanna offer a motion to test the will?
I'll make a motion to approve with, uh, the way to present it.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Let's get it on the table.
Thank you, Charles. All right. Lauren, will you give the roll call?
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Peterson? Silkwood? Slattery?
No.
And Altizer? All right, that's four and four. The motion does not pass.
Does not call.
Oh, I'm sorry, and this Longmire.
No.
That is actually five and three. The motion does not pass.
All right. Next, we have a, I don't see this on the agenda, but we have here.
A little bit further down.
Okay.
And then we'll go over these, uh, staff level projects.
Okay. All right. So staff level projects approved, uh, I don't need to read these, do I?
No, no.
Everybody, anybody got questions about anything for Keith?
Yeah.
On our staff level approved pending projects, whatever happened to Martin Barber King or whatever it was?
Uh, I have no current update on that at this, at this point, so, yeah, so we'll, we'll see. We'll see how things, how things are going with that. But we certainly know of everyone's interest, and we're still very interested, uh, in that, in that occurring. But I, I don't have any updated information in regards to that. I wish I did.
Anybody else have questions about these, both pending and approved? All right, we'll move past it. Now we're to the, can, the resolution 2022-09. It's a resolution recommending the acceptance of abandoning an unused public right-of-way located in Center Point Park, section, section six. So do we have to take advantage of this?
Uh, yeah, and I'll, I'll just say a little something. This ties into that plat, that we approved conditionally upon getting the right-of-way, uh, removed. And this will be going, this has already went to the BOMA, uh, Public, um, Public Works Committee, and then this will be going after tonight. This will be going directly to BOMA, uh, for next, next week, uh, for them to make a decision on.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
So moved by Mr. Grayson, and a second by Lee.
Lauren, will you do the roll call?
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
And Altizer.
Yes.
That's all eight.
Planning Director comments?
Yes, I will definitely try to keep this brief. I know we've had a long, a long meeting tonight. That, sometimes that's hard for me to do. But this card, this card, uh, several hundred, uh, folks in the community will start getting this card. This is on our Westlake, uh, uh, Future Land Use and Framework Plan for Westlake, which is basically West Main and Old Town. Uh, we will be having our first, uh, public meeting, input meeting, uh, on October the 18th at 6:30 at Jean Brown Elementary School. And, uh, then we're also going out, starting tomorrow, we're gonna actually, we've already mailed out to all the property owners, and they'll start, they're probably already started getting these. Uh, but we're gonna be going up and down Main Street, uh, giving these to all the businesses as well. Because a lot of times, uh, the businesses don't actually own the, own the land, and we kind of wanna make sure. Uh, we're, we're trying to do something where we're getting the word out so that, you know, uh, so that our participation in this plan will be more than we've ever had in anything else. That's kind of our goal. And so we're excited about the plan, and, uh, this will be some. And, uh, this will be something, this plan will be something that the planning commission, uh, will, uh, will be, will be working on and appro, and reviewing to approve that particular plan. Also with that, uh, I believe, uh, no, the second Tuesday in November, we will also, we, the third Tuesday in November, we will have a work session on this plan. So we definitely will have a meeting on that, on that date. One thing I wanted to share, I appreciate everybody that, uh, attended, uh, the training that we had, the four hours of required training. I appreciate that. I thought it was really interesting. I learned a lot, you know, from that. Uh, and if you haven't completed that, uh, make sure, I think, uh, Lauren had sent the, the link out to watch that, and thoroughly watched that. It was, it's really, really, uh, in- interesting. And, uh, they gave, they got a lot of information in both of those two-hour sessions. One of the things that we're looking to do after the first of next year, one of the things that came out in that training was about findings of fact. And typically, we have, we always have findings of fact for rezonings and things like that, but, you know, they suggested really having findings of fact for everything. And so we're gonna be looking at doing something where we have planning, in addition to staff comments, having planning staff findings of fact, so that everything, large and small, that's approved, uh, a, a typical motion might be to approve with all staff, uh, staff comments and all planning department finding of facts. And then that way, the decisions that are made, you know, have some specific findings of fact that will bolster us, uh, if, if any decision is challenged. As long as we stay within the authority that the planning commission has, then that way, if we have future, um, um, future appeals to any decisions that's made, uh, that we've made very sound, very thorough, thought-out decisions with specific language. And so we're gonna be looking at doing that, uh, here, uh, after the first, first of the year. And so that's everything, uh, that, uh, that I had, Mr. Chairman, and, and thank you so much for, uh, stepping in, uh, and, uh, and, and taking care of the meeting tonight. Did an excellent job and certainly appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, with that note, I'll take, uh, any motion to adjourn, please.
Move to adjourn.
All right. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?